We call a meeting in order. Roll call please.
Hargit.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Maribella.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Whitmore.
Here.
And Bruno.
Here. Please stand for tonight's invocation and pledge. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Tom King from North Point Church. Tom?
Father, we just, we come to you tonight, we thank you for such a beautiful day that you've given us today, Father. We thank you for all that you do, but we thank you for this group of individuals who takes care of one of the parter force, Father. Each elected official that gives them their time to see things running. Father, we have a lot of stuff on this agenda tonight, but I know there's a lot of important things, but I do see one thing, Father, is our firefighters who have gone above and beyond the call of duty to save lives. Father, they do that daily, and they don't do it lightly, they jump right into it, Father, they don't think about it. So, we thank you for firefighters, we thank you for our police officers who sacrifice for themselves every day to keep us safe. So, Father, as tonight's business goes along, we just pray, Father, that you would keep it in an order, that you would be with everybody as they make decisions. Father, just know that we love you and we thank you for all that you do, and we pray these things in your son's name.
Amen.
I contribute to the fight against the贪污腐败 America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under Adam, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item is approve our previous meeting minutes. I need a motion to approve the October 1st, 2019 regular board meeting minutes.
A minute.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to old business. I need a motion to adopt as presented an ordinance authorizing and regulating the legal marketing of recreational cannabis.
A little second.
Any discussion on that? Roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to village administration report. Greg Jackson.
Nothing to report, most of the contents already, the agenda, Mr. Mayor, and just to keep the village board apprised that we're still moving aggressively on the budget. We had meetings with the auditor regarding the recent audit for the last fiscal year as well as his management report, as well as moving forward with data collection on the wage and compensation study for the entire staff. We've got that data, I've been working it and analyzing it, and hopefully within the next two to three weeks have something to present to the board for consumption and discussion.
Great, thank you. We move on to mayor's report. First item EMS valor board. I would like to ask, uh, yeah. [inaudible]
Our mayor of board, thanks for a couple minutes of your time, and family and friends of our firefighters, paramedics, and EMTs, thank you for coming and supporting our group, we appreciate it. So, like I said, just take a couple minutes of your time. First, I'd like to start by saying, you probably all watch shows like Chicago Fire, Chicago Med, I don't even know the names of them because I don't really watch them. But you'll notice that most of the calls that they all always go on are valiant, life-saving, perfectly run, happy ending type stuff for the most part. And really, that's not really how it happens. You know, most of the calls we run, we handle professionally and some turn out good, but a lot of them just don't have those happy endings and turn out really good, especially when it's somebody not breathing or their heart stops. And one of the main reasons for that is when somebody's heart decides to stop, it's really difficult to get it back going again. And that's just kind of a fact of nature. But every once in a while, we do get one of those calls, they have to sit back and say, wow, they did a really good job, and they actually saved a life today. And we can't recognize every one of those because those, you know, do happen occasionally. But every once in a while, one of those calls comes along that is wow, one of those wow kind of calls. And on September 14th, down at the marina was one of those occasions. We got the call as we normally do, tell them about for somebody who, I think the call was for somebody who collapsed, dispatch let us know they weren't breathing on the way. Also let us know that a nurse bystander had started CPR, which was great. Without going into all the specifics, that's why we advertise CPR classes so often, how important that is to start as soon as possible if you do find yourselves in one of those situations. So skipping forward a little bit, our crew got there and they do what we normally do, our advanced life support skills, CPR, cardiac monitor, defibrillation, and lo and behold, they got a pulse back. And I think it was touch and go a little for a while, sometimes in these calls, that's what happens, you get a pulse back and then they lose it again, and you know, that's just how it goes. What made this one a little bit more dramatic was by the time the patient got to the hospital, this is the Eastern Monkean, the patient was awake, hold his breathing tube out, and was talking to the EDR staff. You really never hear situations like that, even though you might see them on TV, that really doesn't happen that often. So, in talks with Greg and the mayor, it just seemed very appropriate to acknowledge that staff publicly. So, we're gonna do that?
Yes.
So, if you're out there, we do have a little valor pin, if we could have the crew from that night come on up and join me, we'll announce them by name, and mayor, that little something for you. Assistant Chief Keon Stowe. Lieutenant Joshua Trice. Engineer Paramedic, Doug Winston. Engineer and EMT, Amen Rafat. Also this here's firefighter. Firefighter Paramedic, Tyler Howard. And Firefighter Paramedic, Joshua Keen. So, most of our guys and gals never expects recognition or really wants it, but again, this is one of those situations that really deserves it. So, thank you for your time, and thank you guys for doing that.
Thank you, Judge.
Before you guys leave, I just wanted to say, I was actually down there to watch that call. We had a farmer's market that day, saw the emergency vehicles literally flying down the marina, to the marina, so I had some time to kill, so I drove down. And I stood way back, I tend to go the opposite direction when I see emergency vehicles, I don't want to be involved, I don't want to get in the way. But I figured I'd come down and I stood back and I watched that whole, from the time you went, you were down at the doc, all the time until you transported the patient. And it was, it was pretty incredible what I witnessed, in that I could see every one of your adrenaline at the highest, I mean, you guys were focused, truly focused on what you were doing, and I was very amazed and very honored to be the mayor of the parter and you guys being our firefighters. Thank you.
One other thing too, and I'd be remiss by the intention, we had great help with our police officers helping. In addition to that nurse that started CPR before we even got there, we tried to get in touch with her, to invite her, we just, we weren't able to get in touch with her though. Mark Stevens down at the marina had no record of who that was. Our police tried to scour their reports for who that might have been, they documented who that was, and we just couldn't get in touch with her. Lots of help, big team effort, and it's safe to life, so thank you for your words.
Thank you, thank you. Any updates on patients?
You know what, last we knew, still alive, transferred to a hospital, down close to where he lived in Chicago, waiting some additional open-heart surgery and stuff like that, but still alive. Thank you, Judge.
All right, we move on to the next item, which is the traffic study, I need a motion to approve the traffic study, Sheraton Road Design Concept Coordination. This discussion, basically just for transparency, I'll let everyone know what this is, but most everybody sitting out there is not really sure what this is. The village has previously investigated a reduced roadway cross-section along Sheraton Road to provide improved sidewalks, landscaping, and street speed. The task for this project will be to obtain a solid traffic compass, conduct an intersection capacity analysis at Seventh Street and Sheraton Road, and advocate IDOT, the Illinois Department of Transportation, potential changes along the roadway to benefit the village. This project falls within the newly developed TIP district. It's being done by Baxter Woodman for our engineers, and the cost is not, let's say, $3,800. Anybody else have any discussions on that?
I'm just gonna add it. I think it's exciting to see this continued movement, we've been talking about the street speed for a long time.
Back when I was trustee.
To be at the table, the state, and if you're willing to attain it, this is one of those things that immediately changes kind of the character of Sheraton Road.
Thank you.
Great, this is, to echo trustee Hargit's comments, this is a project that's been on the burners for a long time. The first stage of street scape obviously went on the Seventh Street access to the marina, and we were hoping to expand our street scape project from Russell down in through, in through the village, in through the village to Main Dragon, Sheraton Road. This is an effort to narrow the streets and better, give it a better appearance and make it more pedestrian as well as commuter friendly, goes hand in hand with the connectivity plan and everything else we're doing. Finally, the odd said they, yes, they were open to what they call the road diet. However, in order for that road diet to move forward, they had to have the traffic study, so that's why we've moved forward with this.
So, they're gonna continue maintaining and paying us for doing all that? We're not gonna have to maintain any of that? Totally, still gonna be a state highway, we're not in charge of any of the traffic lights, we're not responsible for any of that stuff, correct?
And I had a discussion about relinquishing that.
Something that we really gotta look into because we cannot afford to do that at this stage. And it would be great, but you can't afford to do that. Once you start taking on that, you're gonna kill our, my budget.
Well, it will all go right for that route. The, and your point about being able to provide sewers, water, and all the other infrastructure that'd be required for us to take over those roads.
Traffic light.
And maintain them.
Flower maintenance, maintaining of Sheraton Road.
Yeah, we're not.
And we're all high-dollar items we cannot afford.
Yeah, we're not, well, yeah, and we're not there.
I just wanna make sure we look, because I, well, we discussed this before, I brought that up, just because we need to know in the back of our minds, it's a great idea. I love the idea, but you, monetarily wise, you can't take that endeavor on for the village. We can't, if the state gives it up and says, yes, you can do this, we can't take that on monetarily.
Yeah, the state, the state has not talked about us taking the road.
Okay.
It's just strictly a downsizing or narrowing.
Yeah, and that's great, if they go for it, I'm totally on board.
This'll provide data beyond like what it's talking about here to help as far as understanding business possibilities, things like that, or accurate traffic counts and everything are gonna be, I mean, it's beneficial for those possible changes, but also for other aspects as well.
Yeah, we asked Baxter Woodman in the meeting, I asked them to, when they compiled the data, to make sure that a data set was available for us that we could utilize it and manipulate it any way we needed to as far as mining for information.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on that? I just need, roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to item three. I need the motion, a motion to set aside the rules of the president and board of trustees to weigh the first and second readings of an ordinance adopting and levying a municipal cannabis retailer's occupation tax.
A little second.
Discussion on that?
Just putting the local tax.
Right. Anything else? No, okay, all right. Roll call please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to clerk's correspondence. All right, move on to new business, committee reports, community development.
Trustee Hargit.
Make a motion to approve an ordinance approving a variance to Joseph Rushford to allow accessory structure on a residential lot without a principal building.
Need a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
So, this went to the planning and zoning board, they ended up voting six to one in favor of allowing it. It was a lengthy meeting. You ever been to a planning and zoning board, there are a number of criteria that are required for a variance, the biggest of which is to say, what is, what is the makes this property unique and deserving of going outside of the ordinance as it stands? I know for this particular ordinance, when we look at accessory structures, we've had some other challenges with accessory structures in town that was discussed at the PZB. The discussion really centered around the issue we had with other ones, where they were right in the middle of the residential neighborhood, people were operating businesses out of them. In this case, the property, it's a large piece of property, about three and a half acres, it's tucked back behind a residential neighborhood where the shed would be placed, it wouldn't even really be visible, and the shed itself is small enough in size, it's not the type of thing that you would operate a business out of. And the general discussion on what makes it unique is the size of the property, we don't have a lot of three and a half acre, you know, vacant lots around town, would say that you need equipment, a riding mower, stump grinder, those types of things to maintain the property, and its proximity to the bike path would make it more susceptible to people wandering onto properties, the equipment needs to be secured. That was kind of the general discussion there, but in the end, after a lot of discussion, it's a six to one vote in favor.
So, how are you accessing it? Driving on grass? Is there a road to get where he's going?
Uh, in the.
Is there a driveway to get where he's going?
So, the parts of, my understanding is.
It's a simple question, is there a driveway?
There's not a current.
Where he's going.
There's not a current driveway, there is a village right-of-way there, easement, and the property is a rectangle within a small strip of land that comes out to Thirteenth Street.
Comes out?
Yes.
To Thirteenth Street. So, you're, how would you approach the shed? How would the construction people get to the shed to build?
I would assume either through the easement or through the strip that comes out to Thirteenth Street.
What easement is there? That's a question, you guys did this on the planning zoning, I want to hear from you how you came about this, because this is all part, why we have a PZB board, to research all this stuff.
Right.
So, how is, how is vehicles getting to that property?
Access to the property today is through the parcel that comes out to Thirteenth Street.
Is what, using the driveway that exists?
I don't believe there's a physical driveway there, but the parcel.
The rest, the residence has a driveway there that they.
The home does.
Yes.
Correct, but the home is not a part of this parcel.
Not anymore.
Right, yeah, it was originally one parcel, was subdivided.
Yes.
Family member built a house, was sold off.
Yeah.
Which is why no longer has access to the shed that was a part of.
Well, there's access to grass.
Access to grass.
So, is that what we want to start saying, is that we can have access through grass, we don't have to make a road? I'm just saying, that's what you're, this is what we're gonna start, that's what we're doing, this is, because then I can go and, I got plenty of property where I'm, and I can start doing that kind of stuff.
Now, Joseph Rushford, I mean, how does he access it now, when he comes and takes care of it?
Drives on grass.
Doing now?
Right, so there's, there's.
Comes in the driveway, down the driveway of the residence.
There's, there's grass that comes out.
It's, I paid, I bought the land in '74.
Okay.
All right, and I didn't, my dad didn't want to put the street east Broadway all the way through.
Okay.
And he just wanted it one way, and I paid all that money for it. And that's how I'm gonna get the construction people in there. And what I'm gonna do is, I got all the wood, put on, it's not gonna make no damage on the village property, I mow the village property and make it, make it look nice. It's a dead-end street, and it's not gonna be, you're not gonna put a street through there, it's a street from there, you're gonna have to put a bridge for that.
So, you're gonna access it on the paved surface or on the grassy surface?
On the paved.
Paved surface?
Paved surface.
Okay.
And with the construction people, you know, what builds it, I'm gonna get wood. They're not gonna be running on making bricks in the village property, it's gonna be putting wood on there and a driveway.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I've done a lot of jobs like that, and it's not gonna, I don't want to put a street through there, a road through there, and people think it's a business going.
No, I understand.
I just want to mow the lawn, make it look nice, I'm retired, I'm a 50-year-old truck driver, Brad Green, Simon Heisman, '69, I went in and trucked in that.
Okay.
50 years, and that's something I can do when I retire, I can go out there and enjoy it.
So, when they access it with the shed, with all the equipment, all the, you're gonna, they're gonna be driving on wood?
They're gonna have wood.
Okay.
They're not going on the land, they're just gonna put it on the, on there, and they, and my construction people.
You're talking about for the construction of it, and then that'll be removed, and then for maintenance, you'll be parking on the easement and going by foot to the shed, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, they're gonna drive on the easement, you're gonna put the wood down on the easement? I, so, the property faces, we'll say faces with this. Right now, there's a road that goes by the bike path, a driveway that should have been a road, but back then, the village didn't make them put a road in because he kind of ruled it out because he was, like mayor like my dad, no, he was a mayor like my dad, he kind of did what he wanted to back then.
Yeah.
And we tried to say that we were gonna get away from this stuff, from people doing just whatever, so, that should have been a street, right? When it went back there, and there should have been a driveway off of that street, but we didn't do that. So, the driveway goes there now, so there's a driveway, and the driveway comes back behind the house. So, you're gonna access it from the driveway, or you're gonna access it from over here where your parcel goes, your easement goes back to the property?
I can, I can go both ways.
Okay, but then the shed is in the middle, so that's, what I'm trying to say is.
I don't want it to.
It's landlocked, where you want to put the shed is kind of landlocked, there's gonna have to be vehicles driving on this grass to get to the shed.
No, he's saying he'd be parking on the street on the easement.
To build it.
Right, to build it, he said he can put the wood down, but then the vehicles can give it back to the shed, and once it's built, that'll be removed, is what he's saying.
He was saying just for. It's gonna be shoring, like a regular construction job, then you're gonna need a crane to do all that stuff, I mean, that, how are you gonna put wood enough for a vehicle? How are you pouring the cement? You know, wheelbarrow that, where are you gonna bring the cement truck in? That would be my first question.
Where's the wood?
Cement truck is so heavy, we do it at work all the time, it would have to be like Tom Ed does, it's gonna have to be railroad-type, that thick platforms to support the weight of a cement truck.
The how the construction happens is between him and the construction crew, right? The if it should be allowed is what we have to decide.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying, to get to it, you should have to have a road.
But right, but what we're saying is the construction of it isn't relevant to the variance, is what we're saying, to what qualifies.
Well, it is relevant, how are you getting the materials and the stuff to the thing to do it?
That's not what we're asking about, what the variance was about.
So, we don't care?
I would say it's a different question.
I'm saying, but, but you're, so you're allowed, you're gonna allow people to drive on grass, so we can start doing that in the village, in the areas, what we're talking about.
Well, that's a separate question than allowing the variance, than allowing whether we can build.
To build it, you have to be able to drive on it.
But yeah, I think we see examples all over town, all over, when construction is going on in this construction area, you see equipment parked on grass, people finding unique ways to access where they need to get to.
Generally, they have their own driveway where they're going to.
But if your point, if I was pouring concrete for a shed in my backyard, they would have to back through my yard to get to that point.
No, they would wheelbarrow it or use buggies.
Be a lot of wheelbarrow.
That's what I'm saying.
So, we're gonna, the other, one of the challenges for the variance is about hardship. You could use your historical piece of, we chose, the village at some point chose to not run a road all the way back to this property, right? We helped create a hardship that now makes it difficult to access this property.
All right, I just, and, but when we do this, now we're gonna do this for everybody that comes forward.
No, everyone will have the right to go through the process of the planning and zoning board to present their case on what makes their property unique.
But you're, you're setting a precedent, what are you, now you're gonna have a favorite of it?
No, because the purpose of the ordinance, I mean, one of the purposes is to not have vacant lots in a residential area, have them erecting structures like this, that's purpose, but this is not a property that falls.
Let us say, I wanna, I wanna do this in the near future, I wanna buy this acre parcel behind my house, and I really do, and my step cousin owns it, so I can put a shed on there.
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to come before the PZB and request a variance, and then they, or you'd have to.
Okay, but then would I get it?
I don't know, that's up to the.
It's the same type of area? No, I'm, but.
I don't know, I don't know what, it would be specific to that situation, just like this one, they ask them all these questions about it to come to that decision, so I think it would depend on.
Will we ask all the neighbors that are around there?
They receive a letter inviting them to the PZB, they're told what he's asking for, they get a copy of what he's requesting, and are invited several weeks before.
The whole neighbors, all the neighbors on the block?
They should be getting it, yeah, everyone who lives in the neighboring property, that's a property that's adjacent to it, is that correct?
Only a budding property.
Only, yeah, so anything that's a budding, up to that.
I can just post it out there, right? Yeah.
So, Rob, I do have to agree with setting a precedent that like that, I don't want to see the village turn into a bunch of people parking on grass, or not making driveways and using grass as driveways, but the neighbors do have to understand too, he could easily just not mow the yard back there, and then they're gonna have a completely different issue with mosquitoes, with, you know, overgrowth, stuff like that, so I mean, at least he's taking care of the property, and he's trying to do everything in his power to just to at least take care of the property that is surrounding all those neighbors. But I would like to see, you know, moving forward, that we are not using grass as driveways.
Well, I'm sure too, Joel, correct me if I'm wrong, if, to get that concrete back there, you could use a buggy or use wheelbarrows.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I mean, I've done it with my shed, so I didn't have, because I couldn't get, I couldn't get a dump truck or a cement truck back there.
And they got the.
Wheelbarrows, about 50 wheelbarrows, but we got it all done.
The concrete places got these, you know, things that you dump it in there, and they, and they haul it.
Right.
Not with the wheelbarrows, they're all shingling in a lot of places.
Right, I'm sure it's not gonna be a truck pulling on grass.
No.
It'll be. Okay, anything else, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
No.
Maribella.
No.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Joel, thank you for coming today.
Thank you, thank you, Evan, thank you.
Next item is finance. I need a motion to accept accounts payable warrant, 2019-11, in the amount of $156,506.44.
A little second.
All right, any discussion on the warrant? Roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. I need a motion to approve the September 2019 treasures. I need a motion to approve the September two thousand and nineteen treasures report.
Someone?
Second.
Discussion on treasures report. Roll call please.
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. I need a motion to, for acceptance of an annual financial audit fiscal year eighteen nineteen, statements and management discussion and analysis. Second, second. I'll turn this over to Greg.
Every year, by state statute, we have to have a audit of our previous fiscal year accounting practices, and the audit comes with the completed audit as well as statements and manage, points of management discussion. It hasn't necessarily been fully distributed in the past, I've been told, but we have to accept it, so it can be unfiled with the, for the, with the controller by October thirty-first. The document itself was a draft that the mayor, myself, and the finance director went through, made any queries we had related to the management discussion points. There are some issues, housekeeping issues, that we have to take care of, related to percentage of appropriation and other best practices that we have already started to implement. The document itself came back to me late Friday night, I got it Monday morning, I will be distributing it to the board via electronic means, we will post it on the website, and then if there are any discussion that you want to have about the audit or the management statements, happy to sit down one-on-one with each one of the board members, or if we need to talk about it as a body with the body at the next board meeting, whatever you feel is most appropriate. Well, we need to accept it now in order to meet the comp, the state mandate deadline.
Exactly. And the firm doing that is Swatch Robert Company. All right, very good. Need a, roll call?
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. I need a motion to request approval to enter into an agreement with government windows for payment processing, including POS, which is point-of-sale, web and phone, initially for credit card processing, and eventually utility and recreational department billing, among others.
Someone?
Second.
Okay, discussion on that, I just want to, for the public, I just want to say that currently the village utilizes Ares to process credit card payments. Payments are only available during regular business hours, and the village is responsible for chargebacks and all connection and processing fees. By utilizing government window, we will add the ability to process some payments after hours and add additional convenience features, such as reoccurring billing and phone payments. The financial impact, the village currently pays an average of a hundred and seventeen dollars per month for connection fees and twelve hundred dollars per month in service fees to process credit card payments. In addition, a large majority of recreational department payments are processed through PayPal, which imposes additional transaction fees of more than twelve hundred dollars per year. These fees, as well as a whole, are paid by all the taxpayers collectively, as they are paid from the village budget. With government window, through application of a small convenience fee to payments being processed, only those who choose to use a credit card will be paying the fee, creating an average annual savings of more than seventeen thousand dollars to both the village and the taxpayers. Chargebacks will also be handled by government window, creating additional savings. I just wanted to notate that for everyone.
So would that, eventually the recreation, would that be like a point-of-sale system that they could use for any?
Yes.
So anything, so, okay.
It's going to be a good thing.
It's like, it's PayPal.
It's like, yeah, it's like, oh, we got to get cash, because we're going to the...
Exactly.
It's like, everybody. Yeah, it's going to be a good thing.
Oh, absolutely.
I know that's something, when I lived over at Park Recreation as a trustee, wish we had that.
Yeah.
We didn't have it, so.
I know, like the fundraiser one, like...
Exactly. Okay, any other comments or discussion on that? Okay, roll call?
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to fire, trustee Levin.
I make the motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement for supplemental Medicaid payments.
Aye. Discussion. Uh, not familiar with that, Justin.
Yeah, I'm not really either.
No?
That's one of those things where I wish I had more info for you, but this is a really complicated situation through the state and the Medicare system, to potentially allow us to recapture some of the write-off fees, and when we, long story short, when we, when we bill for ambulance service, Medicare and Medicaid pays what they feel like paying. And so this is a catalyst to be able to start to possibly capture some of those write-off fees.
What we don't get?
Yeah.
Through the payments.
Yeah, so there's still a lot of different steps that we need to take as far as data collection and stuff on a state level, but this is the beginning stage that we, we need to pass, and there was a deadline, originally in October, now it's November. I don't know that we'll be able to capture this year's write-offs, but we're going to, we're going to research it, and hopefully this will at least allow us to work on next year as well.
Dollar mark for the write-offs, any idea?
Initial wish, we first of all have to engage a consultant to, to begin the audit of what's owed to us.
I see.
The consultant comes at a, at a little bit of a cost, twelve thousand dollars was the cost on it. First blush, looking at our documentation, and we still have to compile more data, is that there's a potential recovery of thirty to fifty thousand dollars.
Wow, and just in the last year?
But we don't know if we're, we still, before we commit to a, the consultant engaging the consultant, we need something more, I need an ROI.
Okay.
We, we need, we need something a little more firm on, on that, but no matter what, we, we need the intergovernmental agreement to move forward, not only this year, but going forward after this.
Right.
And this came up at the last minute, the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association's going frantic right now, so.
Yeah, there's municipalities and fire protection, there's all over the state in the same boat of, at least trying to approve this and then figuring out all the details that go along with it, so.
Excellent, one of those steps. Thank you, Justin, thank you. All right, all right. Uh, roll call?
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to public works, trustee Mirabella.
Move to set aside the rules, president board trustee, wait the first and second reading for the ordinance, extend sewer, recapture ordinance for Dennis Crawford for additional five years, and adopt as presented.
Need a second. Second. Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call?
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to recreation, trustee Whitmore.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve an extension of our existing agreement with Shorewater Management through the end of next December twenty twenty, or until the grant funding is exhausted.
Second, okay, any discussion on that? Roll call please.
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mirabella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to public hearings, if you'd like to address the board, we just asked that you provide us with your, your name and your address. No worries, okay. We move on, don't finish business. I'll start down here, trustee Mirabella.
Uh, we were working on a sewer break today, or over the weekend, and working on it, they got pretty far, Tim's out of town, but I think they have a little bit more to do tomorrow, but everything else is taken care of. It delayed our branch pickup, so I know people are probably calling in, but sometimes when bad things happen, you have to delay other things that you do, and that's why that was delayed, so it will continue the rest of the month, branch pickup, but all hands are on deck to, to just challenge the sewer line that broke.
Topics?
Uh, potentially, they got a little more to do tomorrow.
Okay.
As you get into that old stuff, which I've been saying for years, it's, it's coming, and everybody thinks it's not coming, it's coming, it's, things are going to happen bad, and things are going to come really fast and really hard, and people are going to be like, well, I didn't, we have money for this, well, nobody ever wants to set aside money for that, they want to do other things, do other things that, but this, the maintenance of this stuff is coming, it's, it's, these old sewer lines, this sewer line cracked, they, they were, they were draining it, you know, they were, they were trying to fix it, well, they'd find sand, well, when you find sand, that's bad, because when you find sand around a pipe, you coat the, around the surrounding of the pipe with sand, so when you do dig, you know, when you hit sand, you find it, so if the sand's going in, the pipe is broke.
Yeah.
And when you do this, then it's going to break in other places, and our infrastructure is very old, and I think we do a great job. Lately, we've been documenting what we do, we've been lining some, so we're at it, but when something bad happens, it happens, and it, it's just unfortunate that usually a big piece of it goes.
Yeah, public works does a great job.
Yeah, it's good.
Thank you, trustee Mirabella. Trustee Levin.
Um, I'd like to congratulate Chief Street and the crew next door, they've done an excellent job, and with the resources that they've had this year, so it's amazing.
Thank you, trustee Levin. Trustee Hart?
I have nothing.
Trustee McCarthy?
Just, yeah, thank you to the fire department, for all of their, all that they do, and it's just an amazing story, thank you for the report and the information, and keep up the great work.
Thank you, thank you. Trustee Whitmore?
Yeah, absolutely, I'd like to comment on it as well, I think that's an amazing story, and I think that's pretty, pretty awesome that your crew was able to handle that situation. Online registration is now open for Zupa classes, starting on October twenty-fourth, and will run every Thursday from five-thirty to six-thirty at the community center, and then also gym night of this Friday, the eighteenth, five-dollar entry, and it will be a captain Friday this month. And then also, our annual Halloween party will be Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from three-thirty to five, and then we will also have a trunk retreat, that's the first time we're doing it this year, from five to six, and already we have thirty participants so far.
Okay.
Mr. Bragg, I wanted to, and trustee Mirabella's comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's, not at all, the...
They were looking over here, but I wasn't looking.
The, the, we did that road and pavement study, the road treatment study, which shows us how many years out, and what roads we're working in, it's a, it's a valuable tool. When we did the discussion about the traffic study with Baxter Woodman, I've asked him to put together proposals for a sewer study, water study, and storm sewer study, that I'm going, I would encourage the board to approve as part of the next capital improvement plan, so we can start moving that forward, to echo, to echo trustee Mirabella's concerns.
Okay, great. Thank you, trustee Whitmore. And my comments, I'd also like to congratulate firefighters, I mean, like you said in your comments, there's, everyone does, you know, they do that on a daily basis, but seeing it in person, I think I'm going to chase the fire ambulance from now on.
Well, maybe we should get you into an EMT school.
Yeah.